All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to April 12 Commissioners Court Meeting 2021. Let's begin. If you'll stand with me, we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we thank you for today and pray, Lord, that you will bless each one that's attended today's meeting. I pray you'll be with us as we make the decisions for the county. Lord, guide each decision. Be with all our first responders, Lord, in our county. Protect them, Lord, in our workers. And please heal our land of this virus, Lord, and help our economy to get back to normal and just bless our land. In Jesus' name we pray, pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's about 9:01 a.m. Again, for the record, April 12, 2021, our first regular meeting of the month. And we'll begin with item number one, public comment time. This is any opportunity for anyone to address the court on a non-agenda item in accordance with our Open Meetings Act. If there is a specific agenda item that you want to speak to, you can speak about it now or you can wait until we get there. Anyone want to utilize this time? All right, then we will move to item number two, and we have a set of minutes from our last meeting three weeks ago. We need to consider and possibly approve that set of minutes from March 22.
Make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve that set of minutes.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye. Item number three, a report from our commissioners, what they're up to regarding roadwork. I'll start descending order. Precinct four, Commissioner.
We've been putting in some culverts across some roads on 4950 and 4045 and been still patching, trying to get caught back up from the ice and snow. About to get around the whole precinct, but we like a little bit in our center section, being through with it and then trying to get some roads ready for seal cove.
Thank you. Precinct three.
We've been working on 3925 hauling rap on that road. It's the Strilla Road out there, trying to get it passable. Last week, two weeks, and we've done a little bit on 1915 scabbing rap and been just trying to get caught back up.
Thank you.
Been cleaning some ditches on 2315 and 1240 and did some blading and patching and repairing at the intersection of FM 1734 and 1150. And we blade scab down 1150 a little bit and did a lot of patching and potholes, put in several culverts, and we hauled rap out and packed it in and re-bladed 1250. That's it.
Thank you. Number one.
We worked, reworked parts of County Road 1200, hauled in lots of rap. It was pretty rough. We are now redoing County Road 1350 and 1355, going to all wrap that road, get it ready for chip sealing, and we've been replacing culverts and patching potholes.
All right, thank you all. Item number four, consider and possibly approve minor revisions to the volunteer fire department agreement. As you'll recall, we did approve and a final version of the volunteer fire department agreement. Blanks of that agreement were supplied to Chief McCray, and there was some discussion that night at the next chief's meeting about some concerns that they had. As of yet, no one has signed it in its current configuration. However, Brad Eubanks, who's here with us today, contacted me and said, hey, I think we've got just some minor requests that will, I think you will find reasonable, and if we could interject those into this agreement, I think we could get full support. Am I quoting you properly on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so I met with Brad about a little over a week ago, and indeed, I think they are some minor revisions. So before we, nobody has even signed this agreement yet, including the county nor any of the departments. So let me run over the only changes that I suggest that you consider are these as follows. In the body of the document, page two, we've interjected this language, and this one has to do with failure to timely file the run sheets and the training summary will result in the forfeiture of one month's $1,200 payment for each month that those reports are late. The phrase that we would like to interject is as follows, "The auditor has the authority to waive such penalty under extenuating circumstances." Don't know what that might be, and she has the ability. That doesn't mean that she would, but perhaps there will be extenuating circumstances that could come up. And so they would like to know that there is just a little bit of possible give there if you want to allow that phrase. Next, this is a complete addition, number three. We've plugged in here, and this is, consists of three components. "In consideration of the services provided, the county will pay each volunteer fire department the amounts of payments set forth." And you'll remember these, that they were not in this specific document. Item A is $750 per year for training. This will be paid when receipt for training is produced to the auditor. That's been a habit that we've been, we've been following for quite some time, if that training is used. $1,000 per year for fire equipment. We've also done that, not necessarily always utilized, but that has been available. And then lastly, if funds are available, one cab and chassis will be purchased for a single VFD annually. This will be rotated each year between the VFDs. So I believe that they just wanted documented what has been our practice here of late. Don't think there's any additions to any of those dollar amounts. And then the final change is a change from 22, was it 22 or 24?
I believe it's 24.
24.
Okay. It said, "In the four-point agreement requirements under Exhibit A, this has to do with active internal training." And it said, "The fire department must provide a minimum of one drill per month for a minimum of 20 hours per year," as opposed to the 24. "The primary focus of drills shall be fire support, motor vehicle accident support, wild and fires, and vehicle fires." So again, we're simply changing that number from the 24 down to the 20, and that's in accordance with, tell me what, state requirements?
State requirements and farm laws requires 20 hours a year.
Okay.
So that got incorporation to what the state requires.
So we're matching that up rather than there being a differential. Those are the only differences. My recommendation, if you are agreeable to these, would be to make these tweaks, and we're going to trust that this will be acceptable to these departments.
Make a motion that we accept.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to make these noted adjustments to the document that was previously approved three weeks ago.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any comments, questions, discussion from commissioners or audience? All right, all in favor, say aye. Thank you. Chief, I'll get you some more copies of this, and hopefully those, when presented, will be acceptable. Thank you, Brad, for helping me with that.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Item number five, consider and possibly approve using the HAVA security grant funds for the purchase of some software, some programming, and printing equipment for the elections office. So in other words, Pam has come up with an idea on how to use some of these HAVA security grant funds. That sounds reasonable to me. Wanted her to share that with you. Pam, tell us a little bit more about printing out your own ballots, et cetera.
Yes, we got, we received a check for $8,000 from the HAVA, the HAVA, Help Americans Vote Act, security grant for, for grant to improve our security processes in the election process. And while I have the opportunity, I'd like to go ahead and buy this high-speed printer equipment, and it's not, there's been a misconception out there, because I received a phone call on that this week, that we're looking to buy new voting system equipment, and that is not the case at all. That's not necessary. Our equipment is very secure, and, but how we print and receive our ballots is a little bit questionable on the security, and so this would be a perfect idea to use some of this grant funds on. And we, how we do it right now is that we go through our voting systems vendor, and we use their ballot production services. So we tell them what needs to be on the ballot, how it needs to be arranged, the candidates and spellings and all that. And then they print the ballot and send it to, for our approval, and then we approve or get them to redo it. And then, once it's ready, then they'll send it to us in a big old box through FedEx. And just, I've been kind of wondering about that system, and also our programming, the data itself, how we program those machines that we already own, comes through FedEx as well. So we, the security assessment in the elections field has been a real hot topic just in the last year or so, and we're, and that was even before the November 3 election, and then after the November 3 election, it was very much in the news as well. So anyway, I would like to go ahead and just get y'all to consider approving the expenditure, and it is going to be, for the high-speed printer, the programming and the software, it is an amount of $34,025. I asked the vendor to send me a list of current users for this system and their populations or their population of registered voters, and we are not, I mean, Harris County uses it, so that's just kind of out of our league, but we're not at the bottom either. Eastland County has 11,356 voters, and we have just over 17,000 registered voters. So, I mean, it's not out of our realm, it's certainly not out of our reach as far as the funds are concerned, because we already have the funds available to us, and it's, I'd like to share with you the tipping point that made me to go ahead and decide to pull the trigger on this, is when we came to the office, my assistant Debbie came in after she had been to lunch and found our box of ballots sitting outside the building on the back doorstep, and that's not secure at all.
Blank ballots.
Blank ballots. And so they-
That were dropped off by the courier?
They were dropped off by the courier. Immediately, I about flipped, immediately called FedEx. They said, they assured me it would not happen again, and I, I just don't like sending that stuff through the mail. And so this will allow us to go ahead and produce it all in-house, and there's, I mean, I, there's just, it cannot be tampered with from the outside.
Since when did FedEx just drop stuff on the front porch of a business?
Well, you know, that back door that faces the west, we keep that locked for security reasons. That's a tax office thing, and so we asked them to use the Madison Street entrance, and they just didn't want to walk around the building, I guess. It was during business hours. And yeah, that just disappointed me a lot.
And then the next question is, I would think that the vendor would want someone to sign for the receipt of those.
Yes, I would, and I asked FedEx. I said, don't they, didn't the vendor request a signature for that? And she said, oh, no, there's no signature required. I did not check with the vendor to make sure that there was a true statement. I can't hardly believe it. I just, I just couldn't believe it.
Wow. Okay. Well, was this one of the items that you had originally considered back when you were planning your HAVA expenditures?
Yes, because I looked back through my notes on all that when we were first getting, getting it prepared, and we had to kind of give the Secretary of State an idea of what we thought we might be using it for. And I noticed on there that I had written a note with the high-speed printer with a question mark on it, so that's something that I have been considering for a while. But, and I, you know, $80,000 to spend in the elections office is a lot of money for us. We don't, we don't have that many needs. We are getting some minor things like door locks and some extra shelving to get our documents up off the floor in case of a flood, and those things that were recommended to us in our assessment. But this is, I think this is something that we could really benefit from, and also, it's a cost savings to the county. Right now, every entity that contracts with us for, to do an election, they have to pay a $1,500 programming fee, and the county does as well, just to have ballot production services set the election up for us.
So this entire $34,000, whether it's equipment or software or somebody doing custom programming, is all related to your ability to print ballots?
Ballots, yes.
Okay. All right. And that way, if you run out and have a bigger turnout, you can print some more?
Right.
Okay. All right. Questions, comments, motion?
This grant money right here, what's the total of this, what we have in this grant fund, right there, what she's asking to take out of it?
We started with $80,000. $80,000 was what we received. We've had some minor expenditures.
Okay. Have you spent $10,000 of it yet?
No.
No, okay. So you've still got, you've still got roughly half of this grant money available after this?
More. Yeah, yeah.
After this, okay. And you have some ideas, I assume, for what to do with some of the rest of that?
Just really some kind of minor things, but I need to, I want to, and I have until the end of the year to do it, but I want to go through my assessment again, really, with a fine tooth comb, to see exactly what they had recommended for us to get in place, so.
Okay. All right. What you want to do, fellas?
Make a motion if we purchase the equipment with the grant.
I'm sorry, can I just stop you before you go any further, because there is, I feel like I need to let you know that this software does come with an annual licensing fee of $6,000, so that will have to be built into my budget every year.
Ouch. So probably pay for itself almost, maybe with those $1,500 fees that we had to pay for setup for each election. So how many elections usually have, two to three, four, if there's a primary?
Well, okay, so in the primary, the parties pay for their own, and if I do an election for the city or-
Yeah, city.
-will pay for their own. It's only when the county or a state or federal election would be coming up. But so we have, we have either one or two county elections every year. That's, you can count on that.
Are you able to charge your other non-county voting entities, say, that same $1,500 that they used to give to a third party?
No, I contacted the Secretary of State on that very question, because I was curious about that as well, if I could pass the cost on to those people. And they said that, no, since it's purchased with federal funds, since we're not actually laying out the funds to purchase it, that we don't really get the, we do lay out the funds to renew the license every year, but since it's purchased with federal funds, we do not get to pass that cost on to the entities.
And you asked them specifically about that ongoing $6,000? We can't get-
I did not ask them about that, so.
Sure seems like we ought to recoup that in any way that they can. I mean, if it's a wash for the city or the college or whoever, seems like if we're providing that service, replacing a vendor.
And I would imagine that that would be very feasible, because that is a county outlay.
Yeah.
And then, per copy versus buy it from a vendor, should pay for itself?
And yes, all of our ballots, our grading supplies, we can definitely pass on to the entities.
Be a lot cheaper per copy, all we'll be buying is blanks.
Mm-hmm.
And be convenient.
Okay. All right. Any change?
No, make a motion, we purchased the equipment.
Motion to approve this $34,000. Excuse me?
No, ma'am. Your chief of march.
Uh, our, yes, our current voting system, you remind me, sunny.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? All right, thank you. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
What do we have, what do we have coming up in the way of an election this spring?
May 1, Election Day for the City of Mount Pleasant, has one opposed city council position, and then also the Mount Pleasant ISD has one opposed school board position. So that's what's coming up, May 1.
That's it?
That's it. And so far for November, all I see right now on the horizon is the amendments election, but that may change.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Item number six, discuss repairs and enhancements to the Justice Center with possible action. I'm sure Steve will want to talk to you for just a minute. Let me tell you what I know, having talked with Glenn Calvert on, what day was that, Steve? Thursday, Friday? Let's say.
You didn't talk to him.
You didn't talk to him. It was either Thursday or Friday. Glenn is not quite ready to come to us, to tell us what it's going to cost to utilize them for the services that we are interested in, that being coming up with the scope of the work, putting together a bid package, and then helping us to determine whether hiring a general contractor or possibly a managed construction management relationship. I think that's the, but he did assure me this will be well under our typical $50,000 threshold for the work that they would do, and of course, that has nothing to do with the actual work that's done over there at that building. I am hoping that he contacts me today or tomorrow, and we may have to throw together a quick meeting to keep things rolling within 72-hour notice. So possibly, we could have a meeting this Thursday or this Friday, for example, if I hear from him, and I would like to be able to, again, keep things moving rather than waiting another two weeks until we get to the next Commissioners Court meeting. For those of you that had an opportunity to see the building after the mold remediation company finished over there, I was very impressed with the work that they did and the cleanup that they performed. Of course, it should be good for the amount of money that that thing is probably going to cost, $80,000 to $100,000, as I recall, was their estimate when they gave you that estimate. And, but you have, have you seen a bottom line on that yet?
The only thing that I have this time is that Interstate did send finally somebody down Friday to take measurements and see what the cost of, their cost was, to us, would have been they repaired what they tore out for insurance purposes. That was taken, that was done Friday. The company-
Why don't we hold off on that rather than publicly stating that figure in case-
Oh, we don't have a figure.
Okay, we don't have the figure yet.
That was, they did, they said they would give us a figure soon as possible.
But we still don't have, do we have the final cost on what they've done as of right this second?
No, I think a couple, you know, later asking for that, but they, they're still working on it.
Hmm. Seems strange that that should take two weeks.
In fact, the response that I got back was what showed that they had this much budget involved, $80,000 to $100,000.
Yeah.
Well, that's the insurance budgeted there?
I'm sorry.
The insurance company budgeted it?
No, that's what Interstate-
Oh, Interstate.
That's what they thought, you know, that's what they estimated the scope of work to be, but nothing's, that was just an assumption on what possibly could be.
You know, and when I went through there, I thought that there was less tear out and cutting into the sheet rock than I expected. We didn't have to damage any of our shelves or cabinet work. A lot of the south end of the building and Judge Dunn's area, they didn't have to cut out walls or even remove much carpet. So I thought it was a little bit, actually, I thought it was a good bit less than what I was expecting to happen over there. And they did do a good job cleaning out, cut nice straight lines over there. Again, that'll be part of our insurance claims, so I don't know that we're as concerned with what that final bill is. I'm just a bit surprised that it takes them this long to come up with a bill for work that they perform.
I'm hoping to hear something this week, hoping to hear something this week. I will contact them Wednesday, for sure, by Wednesday, for an update, and then I'll be out of town.
Is there anything else that you want to tell us? Is there any action that you need us to take today?
Not, not at this point, other than, you know, any upgrades, you know, with the possibility of upgrading my office to accommodate the cabinets that the other office has.
And like you and I have talked, Commissioners, what I would suggest is, when, once we're a little further in this and it's time to sit down and help Glenn Calvert come up with the scope of work, I would suggest that Steve and Judge Dunn's staff, our constables, and all the Commissioners Court meet together with Glenn to talk about, you know, what are our, what do we need to do just to get back to where we were, and what enhancements do we want to do to that building, since we've got an opportune time to work over there with everybody out of that building. And we'll want to be reasonable, because that's going to be work that's not covered by insurance. But until I get, you know, word from Glenn Calvert that he's ready to sit down with us, I don't know of any action that we need to take today, but I would say be prepared between now and the next Commissioners Court meeting in two weeks, that we should have an opportunity to have a mid, you know, midterm meeting. Okay?
As soon as I get word, I will.
Yeah, likewise, and he'll call me or you, I'm sure. Well, are y'all surviving in your makeshift quarters?
We are adapting. We'll persist or persevere until we get back, but it will be much better when we get over.
Okay. All right, thank you, Steve. All right, no, no action on that at this time. Item number seven, consider and possibly approve an interlocal agreement between Camp County and Titus County for Veteran Service Officer Services. This was something that we looked at last fall, and the court decided they were not interested at that time, bringing this back at the request of a couple of you. And what I told you that I would do was I would revisit this matter with the judge of Camp County and the Veteran Service Officer for Camp County to see if they were still interested in working together, since we had told them no six months or so ago. But what has happened is we've continued to see Titus County veterans go down to Pittsburgh and utilize those services. And as you can understand, it's not an ideal situation. They have not complained one word to me, but it's hard for somebody to come into my office or to talk to any of you or anybody else in the county when they say, well, where are we supposed to go if you don't have a Veteran Service Officer? It's hard to say, well, we don't know, when we do know that there is services available at surrounding counties, specifically Camp County. And so whether we intend to or not, we've sent them some business down there while at the same time not being willing to pay for that. So after talking to the judge, who talked to his- So after talking to the judge, who talked to his Veteran Service Officer, yes, we would still be interested in doing that. So, in the last couple of weeks, I've worked with Judge Mason and Kristi Davis, his auditor there, and they basically kept the deal the same as it was before. She calculated out to the penny what it would cost in order to achieve the pay increase that the Veteran Service Officer was asking for down there. And so that includes benefits, payroll taxes, et cetera, et cetera. And so, this document includes an amount of $8,481.48 annually, which is $706.79 monthly. That would be essentially a payment that we would make to Camp County, not directly to that Veteran Service Officer, but to Camp County. And that would make them whole, as far as the amount of additional funds that they would then pass through to Melissa Laurent, the Veteran Service Officer down there. So we had talked about a figure of around $8,000. Well, here's the exact figure, 706.79 monthly. Let me read this to you, this interlocal, and we've never had this documented before, because we've never gotten this far in the process. This interlocal agreement between Camp County, Texas, and Titus County, Texas, and will become effective May 1st, 2021. This agreement will renew automatically January 1st of each year, at which time adjustments, if any, can be made. I made it January 1st because that coincides with Camp County's fiscal year, they're on a calendar year. This interlocal agreement pertains to Veteran Service Officer duties of Titus County being assumed by the current Camp County VSO. Camp County agrees to provide Veteran Services through their VSO to the Veterans of Titus County, starting on May 1st. Titus County agrees to pay Camp 706.79 monthly, or 8481.48 annually, for providing VSO services to Titus County Military Veterans. This amount is tied to the compensation paid by Camp County to their VSO, and is subject to adjustment at annual renewal. Camp County will establish the time, location, and days that these services are available. Either County may, by 30-day written notification, withdraw from this interlocal agreement. This agreement having been approved by the Commissioners' Courts of Camp and Titus, the undersigned officers who are the properly authorized officials, and have the necessary authority to execute this agreement on behalf of their respective counties, that being Judge Mason and myself. So, I still support this. I think it is efficient for both counties to share one good, proven Veteran Service Officer. We don't provide any office, we don't provide any utilities, we don't provide any payroll. We pay basically a service fee that helps Camp County reimburse, or give additional pay to their Veteran Service Officer for taking on this additional responsibility. And we could do this without feeling any guilt when we send people to talk to Ms. Laurent. Any questions or comments?
Sounds good. Make a motion, we approve it? Start your service?
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to approve this interlocal agreement, which will cost the county an additional $8,481.48 annually. We've got, we're going to discuss this in a budget amendment here a little bit later, but we've, we would need to fund this, at least for these five months remaining in our calendar year. And again, this starts as of May 1. That'll give us a chance to consider this in Camp County Commissioners' Court, to consider it, before we would start making those payments in May. So I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchment. Any discussion on this? Questions, comments? All right, all in favor of entering into this interlocal agreement with Camp County? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you, guys. I think this is the right thing to do, and I will get this sent on to Judge Mason for Item number eight, discuss utilizing a consultant to manage the new American Rescue Plan grant with possible action. Barbara knows more about this than anybody in this room, but she has shared the general idea with me, and we have talked about this earlier. There is a lot of money coming down the pipe for not only our county, but all counties in Texas, specifically to the tune of potentially a little over $6 million coming to Titus County. And that doesn't just come in the form of a briefcase with cash in it, for you to do whatever you want with it. There are always strings attached when you're talking about federal funds, there is always lots of documentation. And Barbara's going to tell you a little bit about what she's dealt with so far, just on the much smaller amounts that we've already received, and how the work that will be involved to properly be able to receive and administer these funds is more than we have the staff to handle. I'll let you take it from there and expound on that.
If you recall from our last meeting, I gave you all an update on the coronavirus grant and the American Rescue Plan. The American Rescue Plan is, at this point, likely going to bring Titus County around $6.3 million. The original coronavirus grant had a limited timeline. The new grant is about three years, until December of 2024. I have spoken to Trailer and Associates. I visited with them, because Camp County has already, or is considering putting them under contract. The person I visited with was Mark Trailer. His recommendation is that it's really a little too early to put out a request for qualifications for a grant manager. This, this company, Trailer, this is what they do. This is all that they do. They don't know the answers to the questions. And so, if they don't know the answer to the questions, it's going to be very difficult for me in my office to find those answers, because, you know, they're well tied in. And I want to give you an example of that. This is from the National Association of Counties. On March 18th, they sent a note to Janet Yellen, the U.S. Department of Treasury Secretary, and there's a list of questions, as you can see, where more information is needed. This is national. Now, the way Mr. Trailer described it to me, you know, I described to y'all the four options that we could use those funds for, but within this, there are many more options and requests for direction, because there's not enough information there. What happened, if you, let's go back to the coronavirus grant. You remember, we put some things in place, and then we had to come back and change those a couple of times to meet the requirements. He explained to me the reason for that. The federal government puts the money out there, and then they determine which state agency is going to manage this. At this time, the federal government has not even decided that. Then the state agency puts additional requirements in place, in order to assist them in meeting the federal requirements. So you can see, it's a lot more involved. Now, remember, the coronavirus grant was only $786,000. And I know, only in front of that number seems weird, but $786,000, we've received all of those funds. So we've done those things. But this grant being $6.3 million, and lasting over, you know, three years, my request to you is that you allow us, when the time is appropriate, to go out for qualifications, to find some company to do this, to manage it for us. Now, what they're going to do, whoever y'all decide, they're going to want to meet, and make a determination as to how the county wants to spend those funds. And I'm hopeful that by that time, we'll have something from the Department of Treasury that tells us what we can use. I just want to read these topics to you, that the National Association of Counties put out. Capital investment projects, lost revenue for local government budget cycles, covered period for use of funds, definition of broadband, remember broadband is one item that we could use the funds for. Aid to impacted industries, administrative costs to monitor and manage the grant. So, having said that, unless we do a construction project, likely our cost for this grant manager will be covered by this grant. If we decide to do construction, there may be additional costs, because an engineer would be involved in that. But if we can, if there's a construction project that we need, and we can pay all of those costs, except for the engineer, that would still be a benefit to the county, especially if it's a large project, like $6 million. Assistance to household, premium pay, purchasing updates to software equipment. One concern that I have with grants, with all the grants, there are specific purchasing requirements that are much more involved than the ones that we function under daily. And I want to make sure that we're meeting those, and that's another reason to get an outside consultant. Education in schools, purchasing of equipment. Then they also would allow us to participate in creating a centralized office for recovery fund, best practices and stakeholder engagement. To provide timing, recovery fund requiring, recording requirements, avoid overly burdensome reporting requirements, a clear reported structure, public health and safety benefits, interest rate accounts, unemployment, and allocation for recovery fund recipients. So, this is the letter from the National Association of Counties. The information that we're going to have, we don't know what it's going to say. So my recommendation is that we, when the time is correct, we select, we go out for qualifications, and then you select someone to manage this grant for us.
And I think that's NACO's interpretation thus far, based on maybe the conversations they're having with the respective legislators. But bottom line is, we have yet to see a list. Here is what you can spend this money on. And as I gathered with 20 other judges here a few weeks ago, they're in the same boat as we are, we, nobody knows yet, and that's okay, that's not a bad thing. But before we start dreaming too aggressively about how we're going to spend this money, we need some parameters, so that we understand. And I think that it will probably offer some great opportunities, and there will be, you know, a lot of things that we could consider. You know, what about, what are the pros and cons of, say, hiring an in-house person for three years to manage this grant? Somebody that would work, you know, say, under your office, and we'd find them a spot? What are the advantages of using a consulting firm?
Well, consulting firm is going to be tied in to whatever federal, or state agency eventually becomes tasked with managing this grant. In my office, whoever's in there is going to have the same problem that I had with the coronavirus grant, getting that information. So there's a real difficulty with that, as evidenced by the fact that, you know, I had to come back to y'all a few times to get the hazardous duty pay approved, to meet those requirements. I know that there are some counties that are doing that. What the ones that I've visited with are doing, they're moving their first auditor to this grant management, and then hiring someone else. We could do that, but I don't know that we're going to find someone with the right skills who's interested in only a three-year job. Or someone who knows the requirements of grant reporting. I mean, I know some about that, having worked at schools all these years and managed those grants, but these grants are new. We don't know what these requirements are going to be. And so that's why I recommend that we go with someone who's, whose business, this is all that they do. So that's my recommendation.
Yep. Well, and again, we're not, we're not there yet. I'm glad you're bringing this up, and just at least letting us start to think about this as we get closer, so that we don't dump it all on you. At one point, you can be thinking about the concept here. But again, there's nobody sitting at this table that has the time to do something like this, not to mention the expertise. And I personally want my auditor and her staff to be able to do what they're supposed to do. They don't have excess hours sitting there that it's going to be, it's going to take to manage something like this. So, as we gather more information on this ARP grant, and uses, and when the money starts coming in, and what we can spend it on, we'll keep you posted. So, I don't know, is there any action at this point that we need to take? I would like to know, is there anybody that just thinks this is not a good idea, that we don't need to be hiring additional consultants and manpower?
No. I think we need the advice. It's going to be pretty complicated. When we figure it out, and it's a lot of money. So, we'll wait and see what happens. Use somebody who knows what they're doing.
Okay. Anyone else? Why don't we, if there's not specific action to take today, and you're not asking for any specific action today, why don't we get a motion to table this?
Make a motion, table it?
Second.
Second motion and a second, to table any decisions about hiring or utilizing a consultant for the ARP grants. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number nine, discuss purchase of uniforms for precincts, road departments, and our maintenance department with possible action. We were presented with this idea three weeks ago. We were asked to come up with some specific numbers, so that we could give the company unit first. That was, they came to talk to us, so that they, they can't give us a firm number until we give them a firm number of employees. So Commissioner Fitch has been spending a good bit of time on this. Based on the numbers that you have provided for them, tell us what this is going to cost us, and then shed some light on how you think it's going to be paid for.
Okay, we're going to do 23 uniforms, 23 persons. Each precinct, that allows five uniforms per precinct, as including the commissioner wear a uniform. And then we have two maintenance mechanics at the maintenance warehouse, and we have one custodial employee that wants to wear a uniform. They're $7.79 per week. And so it ends up being $405.13 per year, per employee, for these uniforms. And I think David Holmes is going to wear the khaki pants, it's like 10 cents a week cheaper. They're cheaper than the blue jeans, so. Way I was going to pay for it was the five sets of uniforms, pay for it out of my budget. I just had to make a budget amendment, and use some of my contingency money or such as, as to pay for it, and start having a new line item each year in my budget.
This works out to about $9,300 a year across the board.
Countywide.
Obviously, that's not budgeted right now. If we're going to do this today, you've got to figure out where this money is going to come from, from now to the end of September, anyway. Not be that much, but, you know, it's going to be $4,000 or so. So do you think that this is a good idea? Do you think this is a reasonable price? And would you be willing to find some room in your budget in order to accomplish this, at least until we have a chance to get it fully budgeted in the, in the upcoming year? So.
I would. I think it's a good idea, and for lots of reasons. And I'd also want to add a $100 stipend for my, for employees, for still-toe shoes or boots. If they bring us a receipt and buy a pair a year, we'll reimburse them the $100. That was something that was brought up. If y'all are interested in that, we might do that on a separate item, or, but uniforms in general, I think it's a good idea.
I think so, too.
You're in favor? You willing to take a little bite out of your budget in order to do this?
Yeah, we can make the line out of it. There's enough in there. I believe we can be comfortable with it, take care of it.
Y'all support this?
I think it'd be good, because I, my, one of my guys is, is running the distributor truck, and he ruined several pairs of clothes last year, getting oil on them and whatnot. So, I don't, I don't have a problem taking it out of my budget at all.
As I understand it, or correct me if I'm wrong, what if we are so hard on these uniforms that we ruin them? How is that taken care of? Are we then charged replacement? In other words, this figure could go up over that, based upon actual usage? In other words, this figure could go up over that based upon actual usage.
I guess if you just totally messed a shirt up and they couldn't clean it, they may, I've talked to two different salespersons, and large rips in pants and such, they try to sew them up. If you can't deal with it, then they, they usually replace it with another pair of pants, not brand-new, that are off the line, that's that size. And they try to work with us on, you know, just worn-out, it's replaced as soon as it can be. But on something that's a major rip or something they can't repair, they act like they wanted to work with us where it wouldn't cost us anything. The only thing we'll have to pay for is if the employee lost the shirt totally.
Well, my experience with you-
As far as wear and tear, they, they'll work with us on replacement and fixing.
Well, at some point, just like he ruined his pants there working on that distributor, I think that we're going to do some things to these that are going to make them not usable. And I can, I don't think that they're going to assume that loss when we do that, so you can expect this to be slightly higher.
From what I understand, the cost is minimal on, in a situation like that.
And they assured us that they didn't get anything out. They wasn't too worried about the distributor stains and the oil and the emulsion, so. I don't know how they do it, but our replacement cost is, they kinda worked with us, they said, since we were a municipality or government-priced unit.
Well, if you wanna do this, my suggestion is that your motion approves this with available, already-budgeted money rearrangement, rather than asking for a contingency adjustment.
No, I would use this with, we all agree, we wanna use this inside our own budget. Yeah.
All right.
So I make a motion that we do the uniforms, and we'll do it inside our own budgets, and then we'll go from there.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Fitch, second, Commissioner Parchman. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 10, discuss payment of accrued employee leave benefits with precinct three with possible action. Commissioner Applewhite will give a little further explanation, but we have a situation here where we had a pretty high loss of employees all at once, that's gonna require replacing those employees. But we do have some accrued employee leave benefits that are due and owing to these that left. Commissioner Applewhite, it's employment that needs to be paid for. Now, in the last several years, we've handled this in a variety of ways. We have asked some departments to delay hiring of anybody else until we burned up that accrued employee leave benefit. So in effect, they had to delay replacing anyone. In a case like this, it's kinda hard to do roadwork when you're without employees, and so sometimes it's more important to get that replacement made quickly. I think that not only are we making a decision today about what to do about precinct three's dilemma, but we're also kinda setting the precedent for what we're going to do in the future. It has been our habit for years not to budget these kind of monies. In other words, we, we can't really plan when employees are going to leave, we can't predict how much accrued leave time that they've got, and so we have always come up with different ways to solve the problem. Going forward, it would probably be a good idea, in my opinion, that we budget for this. I don't know if we budget it within each department, or if we have a line item on the overall budget that pays for accrued leave benefits that we could draw from. But we don't have that money budgeted this year in this particular situation. Also, going forward, I lost my train of thought here. So again, we can either draw this situation here, we can pull from a contingency, but I don't think that that's something that we should continue to do. We could, but I, I just don't like pulling from contingency money. I would rather have a line item budgeted in there when we come up for the new budget year. But Commissioner Applewhite, tell us a little bit about this. We've all, we also, as you'll recall, increased the number of hours that the road departments would allow their employees to build up comp time. And so because we didn't maintain a cap on that, and we opened that cap a little bit more, we do have the potential here for more liability when an employee leaves. If they've banked all their comp time, and that's the time that they decide to leave, you know, that makes that bill particularly high here. But tell us a little bit about your situation and what your opinion is here.
I've had Ricky Franks, he retired, and he's, hadn't had a full crew since November. And it took him till April the first, with all his accrued time and his vacation stuff, to get, be able to hire just one person. But and then the other, here, a couple of weeks ago, was, they had two more come up to me, and they decided that they were, was gonna leave. And so I'm stuck with just two hands and part-time right now. And I've never, like I said, I've never had a full crew since November, and I'd like to get back up where I can put, get my tail chewed out for not doing nothing.
Are you hard to work for?
Oh, no, no. No, it's just, one of them went out on his own, the other one, he's had some procedures that, he just told me if he couldn't do the job, he was going home. At least he was, he was honest with me on that right there. So he said he couldn't take the money if he's not doing half the work. But like I said, they lost two of them right at the same time, right at the first of April.
Okay. In order to hire new people quickly, as well as pay this money that is owed, do you have funds available in your budget? Do you feel like in this case you need to draw from contingency money?
Well, either way, I, you know, I might have to get it somewhere. It doesn't, if I had to get it in my own budget, that's fine, but how much was it, Barbara?
It's about $8,000.
So if I had to take it out of my budget, I have no, I just, I just gotta get hands.
Well, this is a situation that unfortunately is hitting Dana pretty hard right now, you know, and it can happen in any department. So again, I think you're making a decision here today, not only what to do here, but how to handle this going forward, and how to be prepared for this in the future, as opposed to, you know, potentially crippling one department if they don't have that, that kind of money available within their budget, and they can't go, you know, a length of time in order to recoup that without hiring additional employees. So that's the problem here. What are we gonna do here to deal with precinct threes, leave benefit liability? What are we gonna do going forward?
Well, for this year, we'll all take it out of contingency if we agree to, to do this for all departments, 'cause it, our smaller departments, it really, it really is shut them down when you have to wait to hire somebody. And then next year, as we start budgeting this summer, we can budget a line item for employees leaving or whatever, and start budgeting, where we can have us a little fun. Some years it won't be much, and then sometimes we might get hit hard. It may be Sheriff's Department next time or something, so. I would go with, for the rest of this year, take it out of contingency for each department, and then let's budget it for the summer, put a line item, have, come up with a name for what we're gonna call this. Because it does shut you down.
Yeah, it's hurting me pretty bad. You know, like I said, didn't have, but one time I had one, one full-time guy, and just a part-time guy, so.
And Commissioner Parchman, what do you think?
I agree with Fitch on that right there. I don't have any problem with it coming out of contingency for the end of the year, you know, and next year we'll do a line item on it and budget for it, so I'm good with it.
Okay. Just remember, we have not handled this consistently over the years. We've done it in different ways, depending upon the ability of a department to handle that, that expense. But I do wanna see us accrue that in the future, so that all departments are handled equally, or fairly.
This was just a fluke happening, you know, at one time, you know, usually, you know, I've, this is the first time I've heard of any, you know, people leaving. And, but of course, it happens, so. I appreciate all the help I can get.
Well, it'd be even and fair that way, too, instead of, we bail out all the smaller departments. But where our budgets are, I mean, we need, we'll use our budgets for road monies, and we can, we can use this contingency for our employees, too, like everybody else has done through the years, as they've had to. So it also keeps the county running, so. Depending on whatever department it is, so. I wanna make a motion that we do it the rest of the year out of contingency, pay for these employees' leaves, benefits, and then we'll budget as needed next year, start a new line item. Do we have to put a motion for that now? Or should we just do that in the budget? It'll just be done when we budget?
No, but I just, I just want you to remember what we're, what we're doing here for road crews. I want you to remember this when-
Yes.
-the budget comes along, so that other departments have the ability to draw from a budgeted fund for something like this. Barbara, you okay with that? You have a better idea?
I think we talked about two different things. So for, so for now, to finish this year and to remain in the past, we're gonna take this out of your budget.
That's not, that's not what I'm hearing.
No, we're gonna take it out of contingency.
Because we said contingency-
Yeah, for whatever department. It may be another, you know, whatever department.
So we're gonna have contingency, and if you voted for that, that's your, that's your-
Yeah, 'cause-
... And then next year, if we need a budget, I'm already on the hot seat here. First, we have the line item for general county accrued leave.
Okay, accrued leave.
Yeah, not, not per department, but maybe put $10,000, $15,000 into a, into an item that regardless of what department had accrued leave liability, could be pulled from that, rather than making, you know, one of these adjustments, like I don't like to make a habit of, and pulling it from our contingency. We, that's why we have our big block of contingency monies in there, and it is budgeted, but nonetheless, I think that now that we know that this liability is real and can come along, we should make a line item for that. Does that answer your question? Okay. Okay, did you, I'm sorry, did you make a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion that you pull the precinct three accrued leave liability from our county contingency budget item to pay for this?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wanna thank y'all for helping me out.
Let's go a little easier on those guys, okay? Item number 11, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion, we approve reports.
Second.
Okay, Barbara, thanks for providing those for us in advance. Got a motion by Commissioner Fitch and a second Commissioner Parchman for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then our treasurer's report and item number 12 for your consideration.
Make a motion.
That's also been provided for you. A motion is made to approve treasurer's budget by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let me give you these for your signature. Item number 13 is approve budget amendments. We do have a budget amendment here. Barbara, it looks like you put together in anticipation of us approving that veterans' services support, is that right?
Well, we approved this, we approved $8,000 for the last year. And so now we have more.
What would be the best way to adjust to this actual number? Because to get from now through the end of the year, we're gonna have May, June, July, August, September. We've got five months.
October, November, December.
Let's just take it, let's not take any action on this, and then I'll move the topic to the attorney's side first, because I didn't have that information.
Okay.
So let's not take any action on this today, and we'll still be the first.
Well, I mean, we could, we could approve this right now. We know that it's gonna be more than enough. You wanna just table it? Okay. She, she, since we'd already talked about the $8,000, then let's go ahead and table this. We can fine-tune it based on the actual dollars that were calculated for us, that are now part of this final agreement. So if I can get a motion to table any approval of budget amendments for now-
Make a motion.
Motion, Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 14, consider signing your pay orders and approving bill payments.
Make a motion when we pay our bills.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, these last few items, let me kinda figure out how I wanna do this. I think I'm gonna hold off on, on closing comments. Here's what we've got in item number 16 and 17. We have with us today Gary from H.W. Lochner, who is just getting started on our right-of-way acquisition for the FM 1735 Text Dot project. We are going to have some action come out of this. We've got a resolution to consider, and I think today's the day to get that done. But that will be the last thing that we will do today, is to take any action on item number 16. But I would like to begin item number 16 with just a brief presentation from Gary. Then we will hold off on any action, we'll have closing comments, and then we will go into executive session to discuss some of the things that Gary's going to bring to us, and it specifically has to do with some appraisals on parcels that need to be purchased from our residents to accumulate the right-of-way needed for FM 1735. He's not finished, but part of the process, and if you'll kinda tell us about that process, and if you'll come up here to the mic. So again, we'll have closing comments after Gary makes some just preliminary comments here. We're not gonna be discussing anything sensitive like property owners or dollar amounts in open session. That will be part of our executive session. As far as I know, that's the only thing we'll be talking about in executive session. And then we will come back and take action that is allowed for in item number 16. So Gary, welcome today. Haven't seen you in a while, but we're just now getting to the point where Text Dot said, okay, start, get to work and start buying right-of-way.
Yes, sir. Thanks again, appreciate your time. Good morning again. And so just to give you a little status on where we are on the project, it is, just to recap, it is a two-mile-long project with 32 parcels, going from State Highway 49 down to where Chapel Hill School is. And so, so far, we got environmental clearance from Text Dot, I think, I believe it was February the 25th. So we were able to proceed forward with ordering appraisals. And the appraisal precincts, Indian, she's actively working. And there are like 11 parcels that Text Dot has that they consider priority parcels. The reason being is, they need to go back and they're doing some sort of archaeological studies. I don't know if it entails like some Indian artifacts, or, you know, things like that. Anyway, we do have about seven of those 11 priority parcels that have the appraisals here. And one of them's not in priority, because, you know, there's a one owner that has two parcels, and so do them all, you know, together at the same time. But anyway, that's, that's kinda where I wanted to, just to let you- But anyway, that's, that's kind of where I wanted to, just to let you know kind of where we are and where we're going. The only problem that I have, and I know that they're probably backed up, is we need title commitments from Homeland Title here in Mount Pleasant, and I ordered them, oh, probably about two months ago, and we haven't seen anything yet, so that kind of holds us up on being, being able to move forward on offers, and so I'm going to get back with, I think it's handy chat in there to see where we are. Because we need to know that we have everybody, all the title owners, you know, included, so we don't miss anybody when we make the initial offers. So that's where we are on those, and, you know, I can, y'all need to ask me any questions or whatever, feel free to.
Have they given you any indication as to why it's taken so long on these title commitments?
She told me early on that, well, you know, due to things like the, I guess, the, whatever you want to call it, snow apocalypse that we had in February, and this, they're just backed up probably on regular work, and, and sometimes, I think, right-of-way, I think sometimes they might take the back burner sometimes to the regular business, but I need to get ahold of her just so at least I have the, the title commitments on these priority parcels, so I can get moving on those, and so.
But she's not going to say, well, Gary's not giving me what I need, or the county's not doing what I've asked? I mean, they're not going to, there's nothing that they're going to say that?
Right, they got everything, all the, all the property descriptions, you know. Anyway, there have been, there has been one parcel split, and Text Dot came back after our initial contract and added some, some temporary easements there. I can't even remember, it's the first county road to the right going south from the convenience store on the corner, and so those were added, and so we need to, you know, add those, but just, anything anybody has, I've got Dave here, he might want to, just say just a few words, he's our utility coordinator. Of course, there's not a lot we can do and add and do until we start actually acquiring some parcels so that the, that the owners can, or utility owners, they can move their lines. And, you know, I don't think Text Dot has begun the PSNE, which is the plan specifications and estimate, and so you probably, what is it, 60% you want to be at on those plans before you actually, so they know where to go, you know, and know where coordinates are and how deep to go and all those kind of things.
60% of what?
Plans, yeah.
You want, you want Text Dot's plans to be 60% complete?
Yes, it's, they go, they start with 30, they go to 60, they have these, these, I guess you want to call them milestones that they, they lead, and then they review them, and then they move on up to 60. By the time you get to 60, you pretty well have your, your plans set, and then you go to 95, I believe.
90 to 95.
Okay, and then you're ready to send it down to Austin to get a bid package, you know, put together for the highway contract.
Will you talk to us about the process, just so the public understands, and maybe somebody who is a parcel owner out there will watch this on the YouTube channel, but talk to us about the, the steps involved before we actually go to closing on a right-of-way parcel where it's a done deal and it's over with? How does that begin? What are the steps involved? What role do you play? What role do we play?
Okay, okay, so again, like I said, we got the environmental clearance February 25th, so that gives us a go-ahead to begin the right-of-way process, acquisition process, and then that lets us, you know, if you have all your, your surveys done, your individual parcel descriptions, which we have now, we can move forward and get the appraisals done. We hired an independent appraiser who's licensed with the state, and they go out there, and all last month they were doing inspections on all the parcels, meeting with the property officials, and the properties to determine if there's any partial property items out there, and then evaluating all of the real estate, which is the land and improvements like fencing or septic, you know, so on and so forth, and put the value on all those so that we have a fair market value offer. Okay, so once these get done and they're approved, you know, the values are approved by the county and, and the Text Dot, then we can move forward with our, also with our title commitments. We can then put together the written offer and get that to the property owner and meet with them face-to-face and start negotiating, and, I mean, what I'm seeing now, I mean, I think our appraiser's done a great job so far. So hopefully, you know, people will be pleased at what they're offered, and then when we make the offer, and then we're able to come to like a settlement, they may possibly want to, you know, come back with a counter offer, and I'll facilitate that with them, I'm the right-of-way agent, so I'll be out there visiting with them, and I can facilitate that, bring it to the county. Y'all can look at it and see if y'all want to move ahead with it, you know, to reach a settlement, and let's see, we'll get back with them, and if they, if everybody says, yes, we're good to go, then I will go ahead and get them to sign on the right-of-way deed and other documents, and then once we get those documents, we can bring them to the county or send you a copy and order a check. And then we will take that to the title company so they can arrange for a closing with these property owners. Now, there may be some, you know, that we might not be able to reach an agreement with, and then that's where you have, you know, the, the eminent domain authority where you can go to the special commission attorney to try to work it out, another, just another avenue to work it out. And then once we're closed with the title company, then you, you have the property. You own it, or, well, really, it'll end up with the state, even though the county is purchasing the property with their money, it's really going to go over to the state so they can build on the project. They're doing 100% construction, so there's anything to do. That's pretty well the process, and of course, when we make the offer, we've got, we've got things to put in there with the offer, which is like the landowners' bill of rights. Now, we've already really sent those, we send out, we've already sent out our notifications just to say the county's hired Lochner, we've got this project coming, and if you haven't been contacted already by the appraiser, you will be contacted, and so we've already reached out, I've already talked to several of the owners already, you know, and I was able to meet with some out there on the property and just kind of go ahead and sort of explain the process to them if they were available that day, and so, I mean, things are moving along good, I mean, just as expected, like it should. Anybody have any?
What's the largest parcel that we're buying?
It could be because of that, that first 49-hour curve, you know, from the, from the convenience store, takes a, hooks it to the left, where they're going to be, you know, trying to straighten out that curve, that's, that's a lot of it, to make it a lot safer, and so those parcels kind of go pretty deep. Let's see, that's parcel six, and that is a residential owner, and it goes back in pretty deep, so what may happen there, it could affect the septic, and I'm not sure what the county's rules are, do y'all require like one acre for like a public system to be installed?
Well, that hasn't, that hasn't necessarily been historically our requirement. We have some new subdivision requirements stating minimum lot size is an acre, but we do have some flexibility depending upon an engineer's ability to say, hey, we can design a, a water system here that will take care of a septic system with considerably less acreage, but we've set our standard up being one acre. Now, that hasn't always been the case, and we've got, you know, we've got engineers that can design a plan certainly to take care of a single dwelling on much less than one acre.
Right, okay, if that's the case, then, you know, if, if they can't cure it, you know, so there's no space, you know, but maybe y'all can make an exception to that, but I was going to give you the acreage of it. Yeah, five is pretty deep, too, and that's Margaret Spanier. She's probably in her early 90s, but still a really sharp lady, and hers, she's got a son in Florida that's an engineer, so I've talked to him, and that's pretty deep. So hers could be the largest one, let's see. That's like 4.443 acres.
Okay.
And then parcel six, that, well, that's like 1.013 acres should be acquired, but what they're going to have left is 0.627 of an acre. So it's not much over half an acre, so I don't know if that, what can be done there?
Well, TCEQ just requires a half acre, so.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, the county's going to work with somebody who's in a situation like that
Okay.
To be able to come up with a septic system that works.
What the state has done if, if like, just for an example, Smith County, they had Old Jackson, Ohio, they were, why, it was just 2493, like where Flynn is in that area, and there was a couple of houses, they weren't biseptic by the new line, but their septic were affected, and they weren't going to be able to cure those, so they give them the option of relocating, as it is, it's not a have-to. If they want to choose the state, they can, but if they want to go, then it's offered to them, but if we can cure this situation, they can stay there. And I don't think that they would want to, the gentleman, well, he's, he's like in a group and they have them.
Well, let's hold off on names.
Okay.
All right. But, but really, generally speaking, these parcels are, most of them are less than an acre, you mean, they're, they, you know, that'd be on the high end, four acres, and there's one for an acre, but, you know, the whole, the whole total acreage of the whole 32 parcels is?
The whole total, I'm not sure.
Less than 15 acres?
I think you're right, I think you're right. I think it's about that, but, yeah, you have, yeah, most of them are less than an acre.
And the objective with our purchase prices, we're not trying to, you know, your, your charge is not to, you know, beat these people down and spend as little money as possible, it's to be, be fair, consider the totality of the circumstances, give them a fair price where both parties feel like it, it's a reasonable deal in light of what we're trying to accomplish.
Right.
And our role today, you're going to share with us in executive session, what you need from us is just basically for us to say that, based on what I know, that seems reasonable, and give you the authority to move forward.
Yes, sir.
We're not getting into the negotiation process, we leave that up to you and, and all these guys, none of us have really been a part of that negotiation process before, and so we don't really want to get into the, you know, into that with, with folks that come to us, just simply say, we've, you know, engaged Lochner, but there is a process that you can go through, and Lochner and Gary will explain that procedure to you.
Now, there are things, well, if people want to go to, to like the Text Dot website, just text dot.org, they can go and just do a search on, you know, the right-of-way process, and it would kind of tell them, but we do provide booklets, you know, with the offer to tell them what our process is, and there's, there's a booklet, right-of-way purchase by, you know, counties and cities that we will give them, and they can, but they can go online and look that up, and no matter what size parcel, if it's five acres or a half acre, it's all the same process that we have to follow, we have to follow the Uniform Act, which is, that's the federal rules, and then it, and then it, you know, drills down to the state, and they, they have, you know, their guidelines, too. So we have to follow those no matter what parcel, whatever size it is.
Okay. All right. I'm going to set this, this motion that we're talking about, I mean, this agenda item we're talking about here, number 16, we will have some action, primarily a resolution saying that we need to purchase some right-of-way to achieve this project. So we'll hold off on that, that'll be our final item.
Okay.
So before we go into executive session, let's have any closing comments, and then we'll take a three-minute break and gather back up for executive session. We'll then come out of that. If they're ready to approve that resolution, we'll approve that resolution to buy, not specific properties, but acquire right-of-way in general.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, closing comments, just a brief, brief update, COVID vaccines are available virtually to anybody 16 years and older, you can get these daily at the Civic Center, allamericavaccine.com, sign up, a very streamlined process, so I don't think we're running into situations where we're running out of shots each day, so at this point, I think anybody in Titus County should be able to get a shot if they want them, and of course, I encourage you to do that. We had on Friday only one person in the hospital, that had been the same number for a couple of weeks, so that is good news. I don't think that I have anything else. I will start with number one down here.
I was going to ask everybody on, we're working on 1350 and 1355, we ran into a couple of soft spots on the road, I'm just asking everybody bear with us, taking a little longer than we expected, and also, we did run into somebody dumping a horse out on 1670, and dumped it in a creek, and we had to clean it up the other day, and I'm just asking if anybody has any problem with that in the future, needs a place to, to bury an animal, you know, to contact me, and I'll work with them any way I can to help them resolve the problem.
Hmm, okay. Mess, I have anything? Good.
I don't have anything. I don't.
Okay. All right. Again, our meeting is not over, we have not adjourned yet. We are going to break at this time, gather back up for executive session, so let's take a three-minute break, allow folks to vacate. Okay, it is, let's see, 11:18, and we are, we have reconvened for our final item of our regular meeting, and this is to complete item number 16, and that agenda item is a presentation from Gary Luba with H.W. Lochner regarding right-of-way acquisition project for FM 1735 with possible action. And we've just completed our executive session discussing the fact that we've got a few, I think seven to be exact, appraisals complete, and they're just waiting on title work before they can actually go to the landowners and start making offers. What we need to get a motion on today is to authorize, this will be a first step, to authorize county judge to sign off on those appraisals pending the next step, waiting on the title work, so if we could get a motion to do that.
We might get a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker to authorize county judge to sign off on appraisals, second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the second item, I've got a resolution here, a resolution determining the necessity for acquisition of certain fee simple right-of-way and easement parcels needed for the Titus County FM 1735 project, authorizing and directing the commissioner's court or their designee to negotiate for the acquisition of said right-of-way parcels and easements, authorizing imminent domain action should negotiations fail, and ratifying and confirming all previous actions taken by staff to acquire said properties. So again, this is a general resolution, just recognizing the fact we, we are responsible for buying these right-of-way parcels, and there is a process that we will go through, and if... And if we have to go into imminent domain, that we have the ability, in fact, the responsibility to do so. So that I need, I need your approval to sign today. That'll be our second and final action item on item number 16. Motion made by Commissioner Parker and second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. And this will need your signature on it, so I'll pass it down the line. Okay, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Guys, thank you for being here and for working through this project. Hopefully, we'll get some prompt response from the title company. I know they're busy, I hear it all the time from them. But I know it kind of holds us up. So thanks for taking the time. Thanks for seven out of 30 approximately parcels. And I don't think there's anything else, so last chance for comments, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite and a second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye. All right.